I'd like to call this meeting to order. Start with the roll call.
Cal, do you have any?
Here.
Carol, have you?
Here.
Lisa Romano?
Here.
Anne Gerro?
Here.
Next, we'll go into a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. And moving on to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a need for a motion for an executive session? Seeing there's none, we'll move on to spotlights and recognitions. Dr. Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tonight, we are going to start with our LHHS band students. They recently competed to perform in the Northwest Regional Honor Band Festival, and five of our students qualified and performed at Yavapai College in Prescott. After the regional level, they have the opportunity to audition at the state level in March. This is an extremely high honor. We're so very proud of their hard work and preparation, as well of all of our students who auditioned. So I'm going to ask them to come up and join me. We have Damari Campos, clarinet. Nolan Crane, trumpet. Cora Mariani, euphonium. Interesting. For orchestra, we have Brittany Bisnardo, flute. Shaylee Heron, trumpet. And their director of bands is Ms. Kimberly Schreiber. She with us? Come join them for a picture. Can you grab my phone? Jamie's got it. She's going to take your picture. Hold on so we can get that out there. Congratulations. Our second spotlight and recognition tonight is for our LHHS girls' basketball team. This team has been selected to receive this year's 5A Girls Basketball Sportsmanship Award. This award is given annually to the school that exhibits the highest level of sportsmanship throughout the season as determined by the officiating community. That is no small feat. And I'm going to welcome Dustin Zampona, who's our athletic director, to recognize both our coaches and our team.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. Athletics isn't always defined by the wins and losses that you have. And sportsmanship, character, and the life skills that you develop along the way really makes who you are for the rest of your life and sets you up for the rest of your life. And so I'm extremely proud of our girls in our program. Some of our girls went through three different head coaches, and this year, they went through a staffing change halfway through the season. So it's easy to give up after something like that, but they didn't, and they made sure that they had a very successful season. So with that being said, girls and coaches, if you want to come on up. And I'd like to present to you all the AIA Official Sportsmanship Award for the 5A Conference for Girls Basketball.
Thank you, guys. Moving on, we have Lake Havasu City Education Association, Carol Norkowski. And I believe, did we have an update on legislation?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, directors. Legislation is still in that process. There was very few bills that are going to be seen today and tomorrow in the Education Committee. One, there's a couple on the safety bills that are going through, but I'm not sure where we are as a district as far as what we can, if we, our thoughts on that. So I need to have conversations with you all about your thoughts on those two bills that were seen today, I believe, in the House. As far as the rest of my time, I am going to concede it over to the agenda items. I know there's a lot to be discussed tonight, and I feel like, right now, I'm going to leave that up for you all to share with us as far as the compensation packages. So, any questions? And I'll reach out to you about those two bills that were discussed this week. Thanks.
Thank you, Carol. Moving on to 3.1, we do have one call to the public. It is on the topic of the budget proposal. Did you want to speak now, or did you want to speak during the agenda item?
It doesn't matter.
It's up to you. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. President and governing board members. My name is Caitlin Weber. I am a Lake Havasu School District employee, serving as the school nurse at Jamaica Elementary School and the parent of two Jamaica Elementary School students. I am committed to Lake Havasu Unified School District and its guiding principles, both as a parent and employee. It is important to me that you know that I first shared my concerns, suggestions, and questions to my district supervisors following the appropriate chain of command. Unfortunately, the response was seemingly dismissed and belittling. This is what inspired my time here tonight. In the past week, sites and departments met to receive information and updates regarding the proposed budget and allocation of funds for potential salary increases for the 2023-2024 school year. The proposed increase for our certified staff members was $5,000 to their base pay. The proposed increase for support staff, at least for the RN position, was 40 cents per hour. If both are measured against the current base entry wages and contracted work hours, the difference is significant. For example, certified teachers' potential salary base increase is over 12%, and the registered nurse potential salary increase is less than 2%. Each of these work groups requires a unique skill set with proven education and experience. There is no room for error or mediocrity. The expectations and responsibilities are great in all roles, as stated in our guiding principles. And I quote, "Through our combined effort, we share the responsibility and successes evident in our students' development." While I do not doubt the recommended increase for certified staff is deserved and needed, I would like to respectfully ask the reasoning behind the significant difference in the increased percentage for support staff. Each day, my role as a school nurse requires impeccable record-keeping, the administration of medications, sometimes life-saving, swift and confident decision-making regarding care and next steps to injuries and illnesses, confidentiality, and interaction relationships and built community with hundreds of students and their families. Absence from my role creates an unsafe environment for students and is often without a substitute. Much like the roles of certified staff, the school nurse coordinates safe, consistent processes and provides a positive environment for learning with credentials, skills, experience, and compassion. The turnover rate for school nurses in our district is very high, as evidenced by the many open positions. Perhaps a reclassification from support to certified for the nurse position should be considered based on our educational requirements and experience. Parents entrust their children's well-being to all staff while at school and expect that we provide all that is needed academically, socially, emotionally, and medically for their success. As you make your decision on the allocation of funds to wage and salary increases, that you consider these, I ask that you consider these concerns and collaborate to close the gap and minimize the disparity in order to compensate all work groups with fair and equitable increase. The positive climate and culture of a staff and school community, while not based solely on income, is based on value of all and directly impacts our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 4.1, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agendas as listed.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.1, we have the superintendent. We have the 23-24 school year compensation.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. So this year has been since I arrived in Lake Havasu Unified School District. Our priority in the budget process is to recruit and retain highly qualified staff in all positions. We've watched the teacher shortage grow nationwide, and while we have done our very best to staff our schools, there continue to be vacant positions within the district. As an example, we have had six vacant positions at the high school most of the year. They are covered by 21 teachers taking on a six-period teaching stipend. We are grateful for those who are willing to take this on, but this, over time, can lead to burnout in our staff and our teachers leaving the profession sooner than they planned. The budget conversation has always centered around two barriers, which are salaries and housing. Our past budget committees have always supported the maximum use of our dollars to support salaries and benefits. So I've talked with directors over the past few years since coming here about moving back to a salary schedule. It's been gone for quite some time. It allows staff to see where they are and where they are going in the future. This also supports our business services department as they work towards long-range planning. While we don't necessarily have an answer for housing at this time, directors did work very hard to determine how we could use our budget capacity and carry forward to address salaries and benefits. Tonight, as I turn it over to Lindsay, I want to thank our HR department for the incredible amount of work they put into researching and creating schedules to support all of our employees. I will turn it over to Lindsay.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, members of the board, as is the case each year, directors received requests from many, if not all, employee groups for increases to their base. Each group cites being paid at market value. And while that is always our goal, we do have to operate within our budget capacity, and we also have to look to who are we competing against? We know we can't compete against private sector wages, so we do look at local districts. So, we began by reviewing past salary schedules from LHUSD, some of them being 15 to 20 years old, as well as looking at current salary schedules from other districts. Next, we completed a five-year historical lookback focusing on which positions in our district have previously received adjustments to the base that were over and above other positions. Then we compared our current base pay to our competition or the other surrounding districts. In this lookback period, we discovered some positions' salaries had been corrected and are currently in line with other districts' compensations packages, while others were not corrected to the same tune. So for those that were not previously adjusted or are no longer commensurate, we did go ahead and correct the base on those. From that point, we started looking at how to address compression and how to stratify schedules. So for those of you that aren't familiar with compression, every time you increase the base for everyone, your seasoned staff will experience the newer staff making the exact same amount. So you end up with mentor teachers making the same as the newly hired staff. So we did look at how to re-stratify that. The other thing we looked at was opportunities for career growth. Some of the positions in the district have always had clear paths for advancement. For example, our paraprofessionals, personal care assistants, librarians, they've always had a clear path to move into teaching and then into administration. During the support staff evaluation committee process, which I'll talk about in a moment, it was shared that we have some very short paths, and it is causing us to lose quality employees because they can't grow within our organization. And to respond to that, we've added Level 2 and Level 3 positions, which you'll see shortly, so that those staff have a pathway here in LHUSD. These levels, it was also really strongly expressed by the support staff committee. They really wanted their evaluations to mean something. So they can achieve a Level 2 or a Level 3 rating by achieving a highly effective evaluation three consecutive years in a row. This mirrors what we're doing in some of our other positions as well. So once the schedules were all created and we looked at compression and, as well as career advancement, all employees were placed on the nearest step and then given an additional step for those who return next school year. It's important to note that this is a starting point. We haven't been on a schedule for over 20 years, and because the base has been corrected so much, these steps will not be commensurate with years of service for our staff. But I am excited to share that every employee is receiving an increase to their base for next school year with the ability to plan for long-term and annual increases. So with all of those considerations and different analyses, here's a list of the different schedules that my team and I set about creating. And you'll notice they're kind of grouped together. Each of them, though, does have steps that work vertically down. So as staff return year over year, they'll know what their annual increases will be. And then they also have lanes working horizontally across the page so they can see their career advancement opportunities. So now to the numbers. For our support staff, the base was increased to $15 an hour. Then we had to go through and adjust all other positions for compression. So you can see we're stratifying on about a 50-cent lane. You'll also notice on this slide, in some of those fields, that we do see turnover because there isn't a career advancement pathway. Our IT technicians, carpenters, some of those more skilled trades, you can see the Level 2 and Level 3. Next, we addressed the salaried support schedule. These wages were also addressed for compression, and one distinction that we made that had not been previously done was recognizing the different workloads carried by our different supervisors. This is the model that we also use for our administrators, which you'll see on the coming slide. Based on our research, we did bring the teacher base to 44,000. This is, again, competitive with our surrounding area. We know that quality teachers are key to short- and long-term student success, both in school and in life. Our funding hinges on student enrollment, and we know that we retain our students, and they get excited about coming to school when they have that relationship with that teacher. From there, we did have to address all other positions based on compression. It's also important to note that not all of these different positions have the same number of workdays and hours. So there is a distinguishing difference there. Next, we had to address some of our administrative challenges we've been facing. Over the past five years, we've had internal and external candidates that meet the qualifications to fill principal and director roles. However, they have turned down our offers because they would have taken a pay cut. Some of these candidates received significantly higher offers from neighboring districts, and we've lost out on those candidates. We know that our leaders set the culture in our buildings. They keep our staff returning, and ultimately, they drive our student achievement outcomes. So the base pay was adjusted to be more competitive in the local market and to better recruit, as well as retain in these positions. I do want to note our 301 procedures, while they've been discussed in previous compensation packages, they are not going to change this year. So for all teachers that qualify and hold the appropriate certification, the numbers that you see here, they will receive an additional $2,000 on top of that base, spread through their bi-weekly pay. And if they meet the performance requirements, they will receive the final payment in June. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Murray to discuss benefits and budget capacity.
Thank you, Lindsay. Mr. President, members of the board. Last month, we met as a trust with the Northwest Arizona Benefit Trust. And the trust governing body, which comprises of Bullhead and City of Bullhead, Kingman, Lake Havasu City, and ourselves, adopted rate premiums for the fiscal year '24 and established the benefit package that would be part of fiscal year '24. So before you in the presentation are the rates for fiscal year '24. This first slide shows the NAEBT, the EPO Plan, which the trust provides, one of two plans. This one's EPO. So you can see that the district pays 100% of the employee-only premium. And then you can see on the left side, in the grayed-out area, that would be the side where the employee contributes. So if they have dependent care coverage, dependents in which they insure, then those would be the premiums that would be the employee's responsibility. And then on the right side, you can see the district contribution, as the district also does subsidize for some dependent care coverage because just the cost of medical insurance is high, just no matter where you are across the country. So we do continue to subsidize slightly. We do, we have been incrementally shifting some of that subsidy back to the employee, and that was communicated years ago, shortly after I got here under the direction of a previous board to look for opportunities to start shifting some of those costs back to the employee. And we've been doing that incrementally and trying to just do it in a way that does not make the increase to the employee very hard to manage, realizing that any increase is an increase. So you can see in the middle of the slide, you see in the red, that would be the annual increase for fiscal year '24 for the employee, depending on which tier of coverage that employee has with their dependents. The increase, the maximum increase that we see across the board is actually in the EPO Plan for the employee plus family. If you are electing to spread that through 18 pays, basically, it's $36.14 per pay period over 18 pays. So that would be the highest jump of all of those premiums that you see there. $36.14 would be the increase for an employee who does insure their family under the EPO Plan. The next slide's very similar. It's just the Health Savings Plan or High Deductible Health Plan. Very much the same thing. The rates do change a little bit because it is a high-deductible plan. But you can see the employee portion on the left, the district contribution on the right. And in this particular package, the employee plus family, spreading the contribution over 18 pays, it would be $31.46, is the highest dollar amount, highest increase in that particular plan as well. So over the overall budget impact for transitioning to a salary schedule, it's roughly $3.5 million to transition to this new schedule, as Mrs. Bitterman just presented. This is an ongoing annual cost. This expense doesn't go away. So once we commit these salaries to a group, especially the size of our district, we're looking at the $3.5 million, approximate $3.5 million annual commitment from here on out. Now, the steps that Mrs. Bitterman also pointed out, the annual cost to that ongoing, in addition to the $3.5 million cost, is roughly a half a million dollars. Now, this is approximate because we don't know year over year which positions are going to remain, which positions may dissolve, or whether we increase positions, the number of positions. So that can change. Also, another factor, a variable in it, is the educational advancement cost. We know that we're a professional organization. Many of our staff pursue increased college credits. They go back and they endure more schooling. They get that under their belt, and then they can submit that to HR when that time is right, under the policies and the procedures of the district, and receive educational advancement, which then increases the overall cost to the budget. So sustainability is basically the key. So carryforward will, as long as we're on the current trajectory, will sustain this for at least from between three to five years. Carryforward, we have roughly $15 million in carryforward at the moment. And to explain how that came to be, we have roughly $4 million that we just recovered from our old LHSEBT. So there were costs, or there were actually monies left over when that trust dissolved that we were able to absorb back into the M&amp;O budget, which then produced savings or carryforward. That was, like I said, a little over $4 million. We also, for those of us who've been around for a while, we endured many years of capital or district additional assistance, heavy reductions. So while the district would typically get, if we were funded 100%, we would usually receive about $2.4, $2.5 million in capital or district additional assistance. But for many years, that was reduced by the state, across the state, at 85%. So there were many, many years where we were only receiving about $300,000 to sustain all of our capital needs. That's replacing equipment, vehicles. So many things that we would typically just replace because it's worn out. And over several, several years, we had to dip into M&amp;O monies to make repairs when actual equipment should have just been replaced. So for many years, we were putting, I would use the term duct tape, on pieces of equipment to get it by for another year or two because we were lacking in capital funding that was coming from the state. And so we had to use M&amp;O dollars at a time when we should have been using capital funds, but we didn't have them. So, fast forward a few years, we've now had these reductions brought, eliminated, and we're stored back to full district additional assistance by the state for a couple of years now. And they incrementally brought that back over the last several years. We are now able to hold off on using M&amp;O dollars for repairs, which produces savings, and then take all of the monies that we've been using for our capital needs, and also, not to forget the bond. We have bond monies that we're now replacing things that have been long since worn out and replacing HVAC units and chillers and buses, and it goes on and on and on, tables and chairs and desks. And instead of repairing them, we're replacing them because they've been in need of replacing for some time. So all of this, and then, again, recently, with COVID pandemic monies with ESAR, that also allowed us to go ahead and use federal dollars to, again, address replacement needs instead of repairing, which, again, produces additional savings in M&amp;O because we have these dollars that could be used to actually replace instead of repair. And that's what we've been doing over the last few years. So sustainability, three to five years utilizing the carryforward that we currently have in place. Override funds is another source of sustainability. This next year, FY '24, we're in the seventh and final year of the override. So we'll be reduced down to 1/3 of what we would normally receive when we're fully funded for the override. That's going to be roughly $1.5 million for next year, when we usually receive about $4.5 million when we're fully funded. So $1.5 million, we still have commitments that we need to remain true on. So the commitments have been full-day kindergarten. The state only funds us half a person, a half ADM for our kindergarteners. So every kindergartner coming through our front door, we don't receive full funding from them. This is just the funding formula of the state. We receive half-funding for them, even though we employ a full-time teacher. So there's a deficit there. We're not actually getting full funding to actually fund a full teacher. We're using other monies through M&amp;O to employ a full-time kindergarten teacher, when we're only receiving funding for a half a student. Another area of override funding that we are using override funds for in that commitment that we communicated to the voters back in 2016 is also sustaining the reduction fee in sports. Just before the override of 2016, our athletic fees, I believe, were $800. Because of the override, that was a commitment we made to the voters to bring that fee way down. We cut it in half to $400. So that's something we're still sustaining going into next year. And then the last thing, and there's also probably others, but the next major point is art, music, and PE at the elementary level. Prior to the override passing, we didn't have full-time art, music, and PE in the elementaries. So that was part of the conversation and going out and having the voters approve an override is so we can bring back those specialists into the elementaries to allow our kids to have art, music, and PE experiences. So that alone is roughly $1.1 million for just funding our specialists at the elementary level. So we're talking about $1.5 million left in override funds from sustaining full-day kindergarten, keeping our sports fees down to the $400 mark, and employing art, music, and PE specialists. We've spent every bit of the $1.5 million in the override that's left. So the conversation of COLA going into next year is, unless there's another funding source, which in order to sustain what is being presented for at least three to five years, the COLA conversation is, it's just there's no areas there to sustain that. This year, we had approximately $3 million of override. So we were able to meet these obligations and still have some left over to pay out a COLA cost-of-living adjustment for this year. But going into '24, I just, I don't see where that can, where that can happen, where that's actually sustainable in transitioning to this new salary schedule. Increased state funding is key, actually back to the override. So the override plan, so we know it's sunsetting at the end of this next year. The plan is to go out and, there are already community members who are very much on board with communicating out to the public of the need for another override. That plan will be to put that on the ballot in November of 2024. The time to do that for this year has passed. There are certain things that you need to do in reporting to the Mojave County Superintendent's Office. There are deadlines that need to be met. We also have been talking not only internally, but also within the community that we're wanting to see what the new governor does. We knew that there was going to be a change in leadership at the state level. And we wanted to see exactly what occurred on that front. And then that would help us to formulate a good plan moving forward for 2024. Increased state funding, that's a given. Anytime we can receive additional state funding, like I mentioned, full-day K-funding would be great. That's a step in the right direction. When we're asking teachers to teach and we're only receiving half-funds for the kids that are in front of them, there's a disconnect there. That's not, to me, that's not adequate funding. So sustaining, increasing state funding and increasing of that state funding so that we can sustain this moving forward even longer term, beyond five years, is the plan. Student enrollment, as Mrs. Bitterman mentioned, is also key. We can't afford to turn away our kids. We can't afford to not welcome them in and register them. There's school choice, whether we like that or not. It's a reality. So how we attract and then retain those families is important. School culture is important to allow those families and kids to feel connected. So student enrollment is the key. Without kids, the dollars are directly tied to the student. That's how we're funded. Every student that is enrolled in LHUSD comes with funding from the state level. So it's so important that we realize that beyond the number, beyond the dollar amount that comes with them, it's just the importance of attracting and retaining these kids. Mrs. Festadagel speaks of this all the time, that she's very passionate. Sometimes it's fun to just sit back and watch her go because when she gets on the topic of promoting LHUSD, you can see the passion that she has for LHUSD. She's fully committed that the teachers that we have and the staff we have in this district are heads and shoulders above our competition. And I would agree with that. The supports that we give, or we try to give, I believe we're head and shoulders above our competition in this particular area. The last thing that I had on the slide, have on the slide, is inflation funding. So the state of Arizona and the funding formula only funds up to 2% of inflation. So in the world in which we live right now, when inflation is high, as we heard numbers in the 8%, 9%, not too long ago, even with high inflation, the ceiling that the state has established is 2%. So the most that they'll increase state base level support funding is 2%. When the funding goes, or when inflation goes down, and let's say inflation is 1.2% one year, they don't make up for the years that they were high. They fund us at 1.2%. So they never make up for those times when it was beyond 2%. So again, we are grateful for the support that we do get from the state. But there are definite talking points that we have and that we need to continue to have with those who set policy and make decisions at the state level. So the sustainability piece, I believe the current path and the current proposal, we're in a good place. Now, we need to just continue that momentum moving forward with overrides, future overrides, and increased student enrollment and advocating at the state level in a respectful way, in an appreciative way, but continuing to advocate at the state level that we need adequate funding.
So the first thing is, I do agree with what Mike was saying about that state funding level. We do need to thank our legislators for increased funding last year when they looked at the surplus that's at the state level. They did provide some increased funding to K-12 public education. We are hopeful that they continue to look at that. There are many proposals out there, as there are every year. And as those come into play, because sometimes that doesn't happen until June, we always bring that back to the board if there's an increase in funding to see what we're going to do with that. As you can see, when you look at this whole proposal in terms of base pay and where that's going to go, this was not an easy task. This was an incredible amount of thought put into each and every employee's schedule. We know the vital role that every employee plays to serve our kids, but we had to look at our schedule in a comprehensive way and look at what's happened over the past five years, where have we been, and where are we going, and what can our budget sustain? When you look at those base pay rates and surrounding local districts, we would be competitive with the teacher base. We would be competitive and actually above in several of our support areas and some of our certified groups as well. We remain below the local market for all of our admin positions. And that's not good or bad. I just put that out there as people worry about that. But what our administrators do every day is difficult, and we do remain below the local market. So I do want to thank our directors and our principals for the time they spent on this work. They were presenting to staff. They were working with staff to understand the process, answer the questions. Principals showed some relief that they would be able to go out and recruit teachers with this increase to the base. And from those presentations, there was one positive, and that is the retention of staff who have already reached out to rescind their resignations. And we even have two retirements that have also been rescinded at this time.
Do we have any discussion or motion on 6.1?
I commend, that's a lot of work that you guys did to make these schedules. I want to kind of ask you, if you could maybe go into a little bit of the gory details about what you did to determine those base rates for each of those levels? Because I know that's a concern that I've heard, and I want, kind of want to know how that, you know, what, the gory details of what exactly you did for each of those. Feel free to pick any one of the levels, you know, and if you would, and just give those details. Sorry, Liz, I put you on the spot.
So last year, we participated in a salary study with Cave Creek. And from that, we received anonymous information, but they do look at like districts. So they're looking at enrollment, staff size, all of those things.
Is the like district basically ones that are same size and rural?
Yes, primarily. And it's conducted by a third party, so there aren't any, anybody trying to skew data one way or another. It's a third party that gathers the information. They select the comparable districts for that salary study. So last year, we actually started having this conversation, looking at what can we sustain, what's within budget capacity? And for years, we've either done a flat increase or a percent. And then when we started really looking at sustainability, long-term planning, and we decided to go to salary schedules, I started looking more locally within Mojave County. Some districts are more transparent, and their websites are a little easier to navigate than others. But any site that I could access and pull their data from, or if I had a relationship with their HR departments, I did reach out to them and just ask, what's your pay right now for these different positions? And what, if any, increases are you looking at for next year? So we gathered anywhere from eight to 12 data points for each of the positions that you see. And we looked at where were we really lagging and falling far behind? And at the director level, we had a conversation about how can we address that within our budget capacity? And then how can we return to a schedule at the same time? So that was a component of it. The other thing that we had to recognize, in the past five years, some of our positions have seen pretty significant adjustments and have been brought to the local market value. So we were right in line, neck and neck, at a competitive, if not equal, rate to, say, Kingman Unified or Mojave Valley. And so we had to make some tough decisions on where do we really need to make that base correction that's the furthest behind? So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of the holistic overview of how the schedules and the bases were landed on. Again, we just really tried to follow the data, look at the numbers, and address our greatest concerns. The teacher shortage is a great concern for us.
Thank you.
The feedback that I received from staff was mostly positive. I did have a couple of questions that were brought up. One was about the way the supervisors are differentiated between people who supervise fewer than 10 employees and supervisors who supervise 10 or more employees. Could you speak a little bit about that? And the difference in responsibilities and how that value is adjusted?
So the first thing we looked at is that we stratify our principals based on the same, not number of employees, but we do stratify them. Our elementary principals make the least. Our middle school makes a little more. Our higher school makes a little more. All groups have the same job responsibilities. They're all taking care of kids. They're all responding to parents. They're all scheduling kids, putting them in classes. They all have the same job responsibilities, but their daily work is a little bit different. So when you look at the number of employees you do have to work with, you have to evaluate them. You have to make sure there are substitutes based on a given day for something they may be doing. I'll give the example of Bobby. If he needs a substitute, he's likely getting on a bus and driving it. If you don't have as many employees, you may not have to do that. Every department deals with audits and things that are required at the state level or the federal level. Mike has specialists in his department. They're required to go through audits. When we, Christina, who's our grant specialist, she has to deal with audits for our federal funds as well. And that's in conjunction with the grant holder, so that may be Jamie, it may be John. But they go through all of those requirements. So it was really looking at what do those groups do? And how do you stratify them based on their level of responsibility? And we used, like I said, our principals as the model for that.
And then my only other question, kind of touched on the same thing that our call to the public speaker spoke about. And just as general information, when we have a call to the public, we aren't allowed to respond right then, but we can come back to it if we want to. So for nurses, that, and some of these other jobs as well, some of those positions are going to receive a smaller percentage increase because in the past five years, they've received a larger increase compared to other positions. Do I understand that part correctly? Okay. So this salary schedule sort of compensates and takes into account the things that have happened over the last five years and makes the corrections accordingly? Okay. And then if we do receive money sort of unexpectedly throughout the year, can we then adjust the base mid-year?
So that is the correction you made to the contracts that we recently had you approve. Prior to this, there was information in the contracts that did not allow us to add additional money should it become available after contracts were signed. We did have you change that in our contracts so we can bring that to the board and ask that contracts be amended.
I think that was it. And then as far as proficiency or higher-achieving teachers, that doesn't necessarily gain them an additional step. We are compensating that through our existing 301 allocations, correct? Yeah, I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Any further discussion or motion?
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept this as presented.
Yes.
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 Moving on at 6.2, Human Resources, Support Staff Evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The LHUSD's Support Staff Evaluation Instrument has been developed through a partnership between administrators, supervisors, and support staff. This tool was developed with the belief that all employees in the district serve an important role in the district's overall goal of improved learning and achievement of students. This evaluation reflects the commitment to growth and development in all positions and uses language aligned to the district's core values and mission. The evaluation rubric defines four performance domains: planning and organization, communication and interpersonal skills, job performance, and professionalism or following policy and safety procedures. Each domain is broken down into four performance levels to align with the Certified Administrator and Director evaluations. The framework also outlines the procedures and timelines required for the Support Staff evaluations. The evaluation procedure is a collaborative process that includes a diverse method for measuring performance, an opportunity for self-assessment, and an in-person post-conference to discuss commendable areas and areas for professional growth. The proposed framework and rubric acknowledge the significant contribution our Support Staff play in maximizing student achievement and maintaining the smooth operations of LHUSD. I would like to add that we met a couple of times as a group. We had a variety of representatives. We had representatives from maintenance, technology, office, transportation, and student support, such as personal care assistants and paraprofessionals. The committee reviewed four proposed evaluation tools and selected the strongest tool that they felt best aligned to LHUSD. Once we had narrowed the tool down, then we really fine-tuned the rubric to make it exactly what we felt like our district needed. And here's a sample of the rubric.
Any discussion or motion?
I move to approve 6.2.
Just a quick question with, could you go through the process that these groups went through just a little bit to let us know how collaborative it was and how they came to these decisions to make these rubrics?
Yes. So there were approximately 12 representatives. We divided into equal groups of about three or four per group. They were all given four sort of model evaluations to look through. And then they worked through assessing each of them for their relative strengths and weaknesses. And then we scored them. And we had one clear winner that stood out after we scored them. And we had decided this was really what we wanted. We kind of looked back to our current evaluation. If you've seen it, you know it's a little antiquated. So we made sure to modernize it. lens, whether it was a maintenance or a transportation, a student support person, and then they added to it and took away from it what they felt would best represent a universal and more comprehensive evaluation for all of our support staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to 6.3, student achievement, instructional time model for LHHS.
Mr. President and governing board, bringing this back because it has to have two hearings. Arizona Revised Statutes 15901.08 was modified by House Bill 2862 in 2021. It allows for school districts to adopt differentiated instructional time models that will allow students to meet the required instructional minutes prescribed in ARS 15901 through in-person instruction, project-based learning, or independent learning. In order to strengthen educational opportunities for Lake Havasu High School students, we are requesting that LHUSD adopt an instructional time model that allows for LHHS 10th through 12th graders to utilize off-campus instruction through a community college or university to take approved courses that are not offered on the Lake Havasu High School campus. The adopted instructional time model through ADE would include the following. Students enrolled in six courses may take up to two of those courses as three-credit or more courses at a community college or university. Students enrolled in less than six courses may take one of those courses at a three-credit or more community college or university. Students must be enrolled in the course through the entire semester or be placed back in brick-and-mortar class at the Lake Havasu High School campus. Students may participate in on-ground or online community college or university courses. Counselors will work with students individually to build a class schedule for the LHHS campus based on each student's schedule. Students will work to obtain course credit by completing daily assignments. Students will track attendance by having instructors sign an attendance log that will be turned in weekly. Counselors will meet with students bi-weekly to ensure all assignments are completed. LHUSD will set procedures and rules for Lake Havasu High School students who choose the ITM. After approval, Lake Havasu High School will develop specific procedures around what classes can be taken that are not offered at the LHHS campus, the registration process for those classes, and follow-up during these classes to ensure students are successful. Lake Havasu High School has met with MCC and ASU about what classes are not offered at LHHS and would be allowable for students to take in lieu of an LHHS on-ground course. MCC and ASU classes will be offered to LHHS students at either no or minimal cost plus books.
Any discussion?
So one thing, you know, I'm very excited about this, you probably know, but what, can you tell the public kind of some examples of some academic classes or CTE classes that currently we don't have the capacity to offer, that both ASU and MCC kind of do to give an idea of the opportunity available?
So there's two groups of courses, one is CTE. And so we've had students taking HVAC courses or EMT courses for years, and they're taking either six courses, or if they're a senior, maybe four courses, but they're taking all of those on top of their load already at the high school. And so this would allow them, instead of taking, I don't know, maybe that psychology elective that they don't really want to take, but they're just, they're taking that class to replace those classes with those CTE courses that we don't have. And so there are many of them. We do have some CTE, we have many CTE classes, we have many DE CTE classes, but this would open it up. The academic side, the reality is, there are fewer and fewer highly qualified teachers who are able to meet the university or college requirements, especially in math and science. You have to have 18 graduate hours in either math or science, or a master's degree in order to teach dual enrollment. So this would allow students, specifically the areas that we struggle in are chemistry, physics, the sciences, this would allow them to take that at either MCC or ASU, and we can explore what else is out there, but the two targets are really those science classes and then the CTE classes at this time.
And I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but these are going to be there taking the college courses, and they get all of the benefits that they get from the college courses. So if they're taking an ASU course, they're an ASU student, they get ASU on their transcript as well as MCC for their high school one, same with MCC.
We are really appreciative. MCC recently lifted their 10-credit allowance, students were only allowed to take 10 credits for free as part of early start, it is now as many as they can. ASU, for the most part, students are taking, able to take ASU courses at $99, and there's some scholarships, so it really is nothing. And so this allows them to have both college courses, and then it comes back as credit, so they have the correct number of credits for graduation. So we're really excited about this opportunity. And there was a time, and again, those students that are taking six classes and then MCC classes were creating undue stress that we don't want students to take. So we want them to be supportive and take these classes, but not make them take classes they don't want to, and frankly, just don't have to.
Well, I share Dr. Aran's enthusiasm. I really love everything about this idea. I like the fact that it's very individualized, so students can meet with their counselors and find a plan that allows them to take some of the LHHS classes, but then also these additional college classes on their own time in a way that fits with their schedule. I like the fact that, you know, our 10th through 12th graders will have at least one class that they look forward to, and instead of answering the question of when will I ever use this in real life, they'll have a plan for how they're going to use that in real life. So it also represents significant savings because they'll graduate from high school with some college credits already under their belt, plus the confidence of knowing that they can handle college-level coursework. So I'm really, I'm happy to see this be put into place. And did you motion?
I don't think we have a motion yet.
Okay, then I will move to approve 6.3.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Enthusiastic, yes.
And with these opportunities, a lot of these are also being offered at a discounted price or free of charge as well, so I think this is a great opportunity.
Free college credits.
Yeah. College is expensive. Moving on to 6.4, business services, approval to purchase student transportation, bus purchases.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As part of the district's commitment to establish a reasonable fleet rotation to address an aging fleet, the district is recommending the purchase of three school buses. Bond funds are available to purchase student transportation, bus purchases, as presented in the bond voter pamphlet prior to the November 8, 2016 bond election. Quotes from Canyon State Bus Sales are attached to this agenda for the board to review. This pricing includes all requested options, preparations, service and parts, plus tax and delivery. The quotes were made through the Mojave Educational Service Cooperative contract, and a not-to-exceed approval amount of $750,000 is requested to cover any incidentals. This item has been reviewed by purchasing.
Do we have discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the item as presented.
And I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.5, business services, renewal of membership in the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust.
Mr. President, members of the board, Resolution 2022-23-12 authorizes the renewal of Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One's membership in the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust for five years, renewing July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2028. The resolution to renew was provided by the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust, and the resolution was reviewed and approved by legal.
Do we have discussion or motion on 6.5?
Mike, can you just tell us a little bit about kind of the savings we've got going through the trust over the past few years, and especially now that we're renewing?
So as far as savings go, I don't think anybody's really saved with health insurance, but along that line, I think that the benefit to that, which I would then equate to savings, has been that we have a very well-rounded trust with a ton of backing and support, legally, actuarially, if that's a word, from an actuary, so many, so many different resources that are available to make very informed decisions. So I can say that that has been a great blessing, not only for our district, but I think for the other four or three entities as well. It produces, it allows us to make, like I said, informed decisions, and which then typically equates to savings. And then the overall size of the pool, when you're going it alone, as little LHS EBT was years ago, and then having other, three other fairly large groups participating in that trust, it does provide some stabilization.
Thank you. I move that we accept 6.5 as presented.
I'll second it.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.6, business services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Mr. President, members of the board, the vouchers, K-12 Student Activity Funds and Auxiliary Funds for February 2023 are before you tonight in this action item.
I move that we accept 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.6, business services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Mr. President, members of the board, the vouchers, K-12 Student Activity Funds and Auxiliary Funds for February 2023 are before you tonight in this action item.
I move that we accept 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 7.1, do we have any informational from the superintendent?
Absolutely, Mr. President. It is almost time for spring break, so I know our teachers, our staff, our students, our families, everyone is looking forward to having some time off, and it is well-deserved. People need to take that time and enjoy that spring weather and spring break time. And again, I just want to thank everyone for their work in this entire process and what was presented to you tonight.
Anything from our governing board?
I'd like to wish everybody a Happy Pie Day, and as an informational thing that goes along with it, is our middle school participated in the ASU Math Challenge about two, three weeks ago. This one had nine schools from Bullhead City, Kingman, Mojave Valley, Parker, and of course, Thunderbolt was number one again. So that speaks to kind of quality, especially to me in STEM, that we have in our region here, that, you know, we are really doing a lot with what we have, you know, the coaches we have, the resources, those types of things are making a difference in our kids' lives when it comes to STEM in this area. So I just wanted to mention that.
Do we have any other calls to the public? Any clarifying questions from the media? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
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 So the meeting is adjourned.